The flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
First meeting is the new year. On the first item of the agenda tonight is union contracts for police and dispatchers. Do I have them, or are they?
No, no.
What took you so long?
It's a long drive.
You drove?
Yeah, traffic. Well, you gotta go somewhere after this, so.
Okay.
There's only so much you can do.
Yeah, I mean, Mike, you could use the back door.
I have four copies of each labor agreement with the police officers and the dispatchers. July 1 of 12. Oh, I love this, we're already six months behind. July 1 of 12 to June 30 of 15.
Makes sense.
Have these gone to town council, or?
No.
Oh.
Well, Chief Silvernell and I reviewed them.
Okay.
For everything that was voted.
So.
So nothing's really changed from the old contract, other than the changes we made?
The changes we made, yeah, or we.
We made changes.
We agreed. Changes we agreed to.
Right.
So.
I'll make a motion to sign the contracts for police and dispatchers at this time.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The only caveat I would have is, you know, do we want to send it out for review by the attorneys or not? That would be my only question.
Well, we did have them review this contract before.
Okay.
I'm just starting there.
This is just.
These are just.
The core contracts have been reviewed. The only thing we really changed is the percentages and I think some vacation language and stuff like that. It's up to the board if they want to.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have four originals for each.
This is just the police right now?
Well, actually, I did a motion for both.
Okay, let's go both.
The chair just has to sign them all, right? Just the chair?
I don't know, is there a sig? There is no signature.
Does everybody have to sign it?
No, well, vice chair.
Yeah, I'm the vice chair, I thought.
That's why I saw it.
Yeah, he didn't show up that night.
What now is that?
Like, we nominated you.
There's no signature page on these.
On the back.
There is.
It's kind of an awkward place.
No, this is just for Mike.
Well, this one has your.
This has my one. There's the signature line of those. Do you want me to date it?
Yeah, you can if you like. Oh, this one has David and that one doesn't have David, right? You guys have different signature lines for each contract, you know? Different entities signing.
They both the same contract?
No. They're two different contracts, but two different.
Signatures.
Signatures requirements.
Are you sure that's correct?
Well, I don't think it makes any real significant difference, but.
I don't see where Dave Silvernell signs, though. He's not.
He doesn't sign on that one, but he does on this one.
Does he sign on that one?
That's here.
Did he sign on the other one?
Maybe the signature to form.
The only thing.
Technically, the contract is lost.
It's the exact.
That's what I'm saying, it's not.
The vote is more important than the signature.
So I think Dr.
Form over substance here. So this requires David's signature.
Who's the other side tomorrow?
You all do.
We all.
What did I say? Mike, can you need a pen?
I'll just. Should we do black ink or blue ink? Does it matter? Everybody's in black, right?
I have to trust the people in this room. We can't trust anybody.
At least we'll know which one is the original.
Right. There you go.
A lot of things you have to sign in blue.
A lot of real estate stuff you have to sign.
Jeremy and I shall go sign that one.
Someday, I think my signature may be worth some money. I think how many times I polluted it by signing this stuff.
Well, you got a ticket you want to give me?
Oh, the history, Mike.
Well, that's funny. I ain't could've took care of you a long time ago.
I know that one.
I remember when you used to bang nails.
Bang nails?
No.
No.
Could've, dude. I thought he had a hammer that day.
That was Charlie Norton in West Ridge. He was a sergeant. He was pounding in some stop signs one time with the butt of the gun holding on the barrel. Boom, 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 he pounded, and everybody was looking at him, hoping he loaded. Here's our place of safety.
Somebody put flags in it, got it told them, huh?
You knew we wouldn't. As long as we retired.
You guys don't act like quarter of them are in charge all the time.
It's nice.
I think the almanors. 6:45, are you? The almanors keep this thing on time and on budget.
Reggie wants some, right?
You have any trouble with that? Okay. Got it. Got it to my jack stands.
Really?
Water flooded the parking lot.
You should go, because you go.
Is that break near your place?
I lost the cherry tree, that's all I lost.
I'm talking about that big wire. Geyser.
No, I didn't know. No. It's kind of funny, the gas stock, which, you know, probably three feet off the wall. Under one.
Sure they all shut off?
Yeah, that was awesome.
And there's a pen. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure. Thank you. See you three years.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope we see you three years of professional. Thank you very much.
Thank you, hello.
Always.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll roll all together again one more time.
Thank you one more time.
Nice to see you. And Mike, you guys send me something, right?
Send me something to Mrs. Roy.
I put it in your mailbox. Yeah, your boy probably has it.
I thought you said Ms. Roy and I was.
I said no, so I didn't, I was confused for a moment.
She didn't say her husband's.
I got you extra five minutes. Ruth, you're on.
You can call me if you want.
We're gonna get, we're five minutes ahead of schedule, I'd like to keep it going.
They never call Mrs., it's really funny, they don't feel like a Mrs., can they?
The board has been asked to be addressed by the almanars on the issue of budgets.
I'm the liaison to the almanars, so.
We, there was a board of almanars, so the two of us get to make it tonight, the chairman is not here, which took us too much. But anyway, we have a slight problem, same problem everyone else has, and it's money. As you know, the almanars has always operated from three trust, from three trust funds, and we're only allowed to spend the interest. And we're talking basically peanuts. In our budget right now, we have, or of the three almanars accounts, plus, a couple of years ago, we sent out an appeal to the newspaper. We got some money from school, we got some money from church, and we got an anonymous donation of $4,000.
How much?
$4,000. And we could keep that as long as we didn't tell anybody who it came from, and we still, we don't know what it came from. Where our board works, we're a very private board, nobody knows what we're doing, right? Including us sometimes. But anyway, what happens is Reggie will get a call, or I will get a call, or the senior senator will get a call from somebody in need. And these needs over the years have been, are going to be thrown out of the apartment. One woman whose daughter was dying of cancer called, and she needed heat for her home. We've got another lady who, a family who needed money for heat for the winter. The requests vary, but we never know when they're coming. And as soon as that, as soon as they call us, one of us, I usually call them up, or Mary Anne will call them up, and just talk to them and tell them this is a one-time deal, if we can help you. And let me find out about their backgrounds and everything. But most of the time, it's, we don't hear from people unless they are really, really in need. And, you know, you look around South D'Antoni, and it's a very rich community, but there are people in town that are struggling. And it isn't that they don't come to us more than once, that's core understood. And we try to help them, but when these three funds were set up by these three different families for us to just spend the interest, that's when they, when they gave the amount of like $1,500 way back then, and we were, we could only spend the interest, that's not.
So how much is in the accounts right now? What are the accounts?
The amount that we can spend is $2,696.43.
How much is in the accounts? The accounts themselves?
The accounts themselves. The first one is the Japony Fund, that is $1,277.34. The Cyril Fund is $443.75. And the Wading Street Fund, it's $257.88. And from that $4,000, what we call the almanars' anonymous fund, that's now down to $767.46.
So you have $4,000, and you can spend the interest of the $4,000?
We can spend the $4,000.
You can?
Because that's on trust.
Okay.
We have them. And any new money that comes in, if we get a donation of $200 in the mail, which might have a hundred a year, it goes into the almanars' anonymous fund. So they're not making another, another.
Right. Another account.
Line item here, okay? And basically, what we're asking, years ago, along with the almanars' little setup, the selectmen at the time were also the overseers and the poor. And that's kind of fascinating, go back and, you know, read the old records. But it was fascinating, they would actually print up people's names in the town report and, you know, how much money they were given. And there wasn't a lot of money. And, you know, one lady called up and she wanted us to put a roof on her house. Well, that's certainly not what this is for.
Tell them about the Christmas, every Christmas, what happens?
Well, this year, this year, we couldn't give as much as we had intended because we didn't plan it. We didn't want to take any more from the fund than we could. But every Christmas, we go to Donnie Fusa and we buy gift cards from her food, her pure foods, and we give them to the, mostly it's the elderly, the people who we know can use a $100 gift card. And we've been doing that for years. We used to give to boys, kids, to, we'd have to stop.
We didn't have enough in the $4,000 account?
That's pretty much gone.
How much did you spend last year? How much did you put out?
We just, we just said that, didn't we? No. It was $1,200. Yeah, it was about $2,500.
$2,500. And what's your interest income from the trust funds?
Very, very little.
Yeah, but.
It's.
Is it $100?
For a year, I guess. No.
Probably in bonds.
Less than $100.
Should say a little more about, these accounts were set up in the 1800s.
Oh, I know, no, no, no. I'm only trying to establish what we're spending, what we have, and what we, what we need to do.
Our issue is, we never know how much we're going to spend. You know, it's, we don't know. Well, what we'd like is if you can give us something from now until.
Didn't we used to have a budget for the almanars on the?
Yeah.
Years ago. Years ago, there was a line item budget for the almanars. You haven't had that?
No.
I mean, it was never a big deal. My memory is $400 or something like, something like that, that we used to carry.
Yeah, I don't know how much it was, but no, we haven't done that. We did go to the finance committee alone last year, because we were kind of desperate. And we had nothing else. I think we didn't know the proper procedure to go to, to establish this. So we will put in a budget for next year.
You did put in a budget.
We were going to do that.
Right, but you need money to carry you from.
From now.
The only place we can get money now is the reserve fund.
Well, we got a town meeting coming up the 5th.
Yeah.
We have free cash.
Right.
You know, we ask for an article for free cash.
What are you thinking a good budget would be?
I think what to see from now to the end would be.
Now to July?
July, $3,000, and then I think what we might have to do is.
We should look at the, the free cash.
And then in July.
You want to see like a budgetary, and then one is some $3,000 to $5,000 a year?
Well, I mean, the other, I don't know what we could do. We can either do it through town meeting, or we can do, finance can do a reserve.
Well, remember, you asked money come out of the reserve from school and several other things we talked about. My feeling is we got a free cash declaration coming soon, and I believe there's money there, and only ask for $3,000 as a special article, so they can have a budget.
All right, how much?
They ask for five.
Well, I'm talking for this year, next year, they have a budget, they have a possible budget process.
But you, normal year, you'd spend $2,500. How much have you spent?
That was last year. Sometimes we spend more.
More.
Yeah.
We're just playing with round numbers.
Right, right.
But if you, let's say $2,500 to $3,000, how much have you spent this year so far?
When you say year, from July to $800. I would say $800 so far.
I mean, it would be nice to put $3,000.
Yeah, she's right, actually.
$2,000.
I think $3,000.
This is the time where people actually need.
Yeah, I think it's.
Right.
This economy.
Well, you're, I mean, they've done a good job, but they've gone through their Christmas season already. What you're looking at is the heating request from here on in.
Oh, no, there's more than heating, there's, there's heating, there's electric.
Well, I mean, but utility requests.
Sometimes it's, you know, they're shutting off my electricity, I don't know what I'm doing. Can you get these people on the phone? And, you know.
Is there, and I'm not, you ladies do a groneful job, is there a proof of need here, though?
So definitely.
Okay.
They write a letter, or somebody writes a letter on their behalf.
And we don't just get money.
No.
It might be. The money does not pay. We actually contact the company and pay. Yeah, the money does not go to the people, it pays the bill.
One other thing they do, they do this for the water commissioners, we'll get requests to waive fees. If they review it and they feel comfortable, they'll come back to us and we waive things. We ask them to do that work, and they've done it for us in the past.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for $2,000 for the rest of this year.
From the, as an article?
From the free cash.
Free cash.
Oh, it's second.
Is there any further discussion?
Why $2,000 and not $3?
Well, I'm just looking at their, what they've used in the past for the year, they used $800, we're already into the seventh month, that's all I'm saying.
This $2,000 is more than.
This is until July?
Yes.
But there'll be another budget.
Then there'll be another.
Do you think $2,000 will go until July?
You know, we never know. And if we get the full call tomorrow.
And this is a goldfish that could fill the bowl. If you put $5,000 in it, you'll spend all, you might spend all of it.
Right.
And if somebody becomes word.
No.
Right, but if somebody gets word that there's money there, you may.
No, people don't get word there's money.
No, but.
It's very hard to find out where this pot of money is.
All right, we got.
And the money can last for years.
Special purposes, and even if we did $3,000.
Yes.
Whatever they don't use would fall back to general funds.
Right.
So, I mean, is it a moot issue, or?
Well, I'd like to know what you really think you need until July 1st. Don't, don't go by our discussion. What would you like to see, if you could get?
I would like to see $3, but.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I mean.
We got, right now, we've got a motion in a second. And you're, I understand your point, but right now, we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
That's for two, right?
You want to rescind your motion and just make a three instead of two?
I'll rescind my motion and re-institute a motion for $3,000.
I'll rescind my second in a second, there's no one for $3,000.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I would also support, as a selectman, and not taking a vote, but the other members want to take a vote, I do think you should establish a budget and start talking to the finance committee, and Reggie's got some budget sheets that, kind to explain to the zero budgeting process now, so.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to have them officially be on, on the budget now.
I don't know where they ever fell off the budget, is the interesting question. I, it was never a big number, but there was a number.
Yeah.
But before we get away from this, who's going to draft the article? You, okay.
So there's a motion, and?
No, we got, we got a vote.
I'll second your motion.
What are we doing?
I just made a motion to have a line item.
Just to authorize.
Oh, yeah, well, they're entitled to that anyway, but.
Thank you so much.
So, all right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Is the finance committee ready with this?
Yeah, I'm gonna need a few minutes.
Seven. All right, so let's, has anybody had a chance to look at all the minutes that have been listed here?
I looked at all the minutes.
Any corrections or changes on any of them?
I wasn't here for most of them, I'm just gonna approve them as is.
If you haven't looked at them, you're not going to have time tonight to look at them.
How many pages are there?
I thought that's what we took, a week off to look at them.
You got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
But it's minutes from like April.
15, 16, 17, 17 weeks.
It's minutes from April of 2012?
Yeah.
I asked Mike about that, Dave, because both you and I were not here, but we can approve them.
October 2012?
We can approve them, but we can't, I wasn't here, I can't change any of them.
You can't change it.
Well, the early ones, and only three of us.
Right.
February 2012?
Yeah. We're trying to catch up all the ones that have just slipped by the wayside. But if you haven't read them by now, you can read them tonight.
Well.
Do you want to?
Reading them by the next meeting.
All right, table, we'll table this for tonight and move on to read them for the next time. All right, payroll warrant.
I'll do that, it's on here. I'll move to approve the payroll warrant, number 13-27, for $228,274.44.
I haven't got the right one. I've got a payroll warrant, not, just a minute, for a second, I've got a payroll warrant, W-13A.
Yep.
And, 13-28A and 28.
Bill warrant.
There's a bill warrant, there's a.
Payroll warrant.
There's a couple of bills and there's a payroll.
And I just read the payroll warrant.
All right, so a motion to sign? Someone make a motion?
So moved.
Move to sign.
Second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
And.
It's like you tried to sign this, but there's a second one in an envelope.
You want to do the second payroll warrant there?
Yeah.
Move to sign, payroll warrant number 13-25, for $231,091.60.
So moved.
All right, which number was that?
That's 13.
P-20.
It's on the agenda.
P-13-27?
25.
25.
We did 13-27, and then that was 13-25.
I got 13-24.
You have a 13-24, there's no 13-24 on here.
Wow.
Yeah, it's 13-28.
I don't know, straighten me out, this looks like 13-24 to me.
That's one.
This is from December, it just needs a third signature.
All right, so this, all right.
Sorry, Ben, you just need to sign that.
I just need to sign that. And maybe the same thing with that one.
And this is from, oh, this is a payroll warrant, 27? That's on there.
We did that, the first one we did.
You guys are not talking? You guys are not talking?
Scary as shit.
All right, did we do the bill warrants? Oh, this must be the bill warrant, then. Is this the bill warrant? No.
This is a payroll warrant from December 20.
All right, so.
This needs to be signed.
Yeah, I can't sign this.
Oh, that was a bill warrant, okay, so that's that. All right, then we have PCS for signature.
Is everything, I believe?
We have.
Who signed that?
13-week appointment for.
Mike, just a point of clarification, we've got two payroll warrants that are, some are pretty old. Can we, what we've done in the past, if we don't have a quorum to sign, because I believe the lawyer says we can sign these, people are called in.
Yeah.
I think we ought to start that practice, because I do think we're falling behind on getting things signed, and it should be done in a more timely manner.
Technically, we don't need to do the warrants at a, at a meeting.
No.
We can come in and sign them, because they're mandatory.
Just to come in off lazy.
Yeah, when, the old days, when we used to go a couple of weeks without them.
Yeah, we'd just pop in.
PCS, I've got temporary appointment for Bill Colita.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can we appoint him full-time? A minute? One minute?
No.
Not in ten minutes?
I think they should be posted.
Have we posted it?
No, I don't think it's been posted.
No.
We got to walk away tonight with some kind of a name plan.
Yeah, well, let's finish this up.
The ball together?
Yeah. We got Joe Henning on the specialization for a temporary appointment?
Yes.
All in... Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have Reggie for a temporary appointment?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
We have Richard Fazoli, if I said that correctly, six fire...
Fassoli.
How was it?
Richard Fassoli.
Fassoli. Promotion.
Major promoted to a captain, I believe.
Captain. From lieutenant to captain, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did that wrong.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got a lot of these tonight. Kyle Miltmore, Miltmore?
So moved.
Date of hire, twelve fourteen oh nine. Kyle Miltmore has been promoted to lieutenant, as he's now doing all the duties of EMS coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
Motion?
So moved.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have James Colita. Change of... Date of hire, eight twenty-two.
Resignation.
Oh, resignation. Oh, there it is, resignation. Move to accept, someone move to accept Mr. Colita.
So moved.
Motion to move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We sent a letter of thanking for our service.
We should. And we got Brendan Struthers, date of hire, twelve nine twelve.
I make a motion to accept.
Replaces Stephen Rudner.
So moved.
Second somewhere?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, I don't think I've ever had a night without all this. Drew Morse, Camp John Road. Well, we got two replacements for Steve Rudner.
Well, I'm the big guy.
I did read that right, yes I did. Eleven nine twelve replaces Steve Rudner.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Just as a... Drew Morse is a firefighter, one and two with certificized plus an EMT.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have... One more?
No.
That was just housekeeping, the one for Adam Kinnaman.
So I just needed to sign that?
Mm-hmm.
Now, we wanted to talk about fire chief job posting.
Yeah, let's do that.
We pulled off Norwood, didn't we?
Norwood.
Norwood.
Dropbox, under personnel.
And, I mean, my comments in the Norwood position, you're talking about a fairly large department with administrative staff, as well as something that's not what is apples to apples here. We have a part-time department with a full-time chief. I'm looking at what we have now, and I do think that the basic EMT status is sufficient, and several years of experience for leadership in that position is experience. Bonuses are academy training and stuff like that, but I think those are bonuses in my mind.
Well, what was different with the Norwood one?
It required firefighter one academy training, which is not something that we send our firefighters to, because we don't have a fire, full-time fire department. I believe there was an issue with being an EMT, advanced EMT. Currently, right now, the oil chief is, doesn't even have advanced EMT status, and he is basic. And I do think that those criterias are more than adequate to develop our status here.
Why wouldn't we just take the Norwood one and jacky the credentials? I think that's all we intended to do, we didn't intend that.
If you want to do that.
You know, because it also requires a bachelor's degree.
Oh, I don't think we need a bachelor's.
And we already said we didn't need that. So, I mean, let me just get back to...
Did you go through this last time, did you go through one?
No, we didn't have it with us, I mean, you found it, but I think only one of you had it.
Yeah, we... It's in your machine now, it's page, whatever.
No, did we go through the old one?
Yeah, we went through the old one, and it was very poorly worded, remember?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I thought we went through it.
And that's when we found the Norwood one, and we said we'd look at the Norwood one.
Okay.
And the minimum qualifications, according to the Norwood one, would be a bachelor's degree, which we already said.
And what page is it on?
It's in your Dropbox under Fire Chief at the bottom.
Okay, it's in the Dropbox.
Well, mine isn't, well.
In personnel and Fire Chief, yeah.
I found mine, I don't know.
And the changes from the old job description were incorporated under the Norwood, and they're italicized.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for that. But it still has bachelor's degree, so first thing, first question is, do you want to require bachelor's degree of the fire chief?
No.
Is there a motion?
No, no motion, before we start moving on things, you know, I don't know what's needed, to be honest with you. So, I don't know, like, East Hampton's East Hamptons, Fire Chief have a bachelor's degree. Does Northampton's Fire Chief have a bachelor's degree?
They probably do, but you're talking full-time, around-the-clock coverage, and we're talking one full-time chief and part-time personnel.
Right, but we have twenty-four seven coverage, so I'm just...
Well, we have call coverage, we don't have full-time coverage.
What I'm just saying, just throwing it out there for discussion purposes, not just because we start pruning things, and I think that's how we screwed up the last fire chief.
Okay, so let's go.
Job description, because we just started throwing things out there, the next thing we're getting this whole airball.
Where is our original one, Reggie? Where is that on?
Um, so this is not... It's under personnel, and it says fire job three six oh nine, three oh six oh nine.
Norwood Fire.
All right, come back, let's, yeah, we're going to come back to this, over finance, since there...
All right, so, back to...
Joint meeting with the finance committee, and I guess we start off with, there's not enough, and work from there, not enough money?
Oh, that's not enough finance committee.
No, no, not enough money, and where do we go from there?
Good to see you back, Jim.
Yeah, didn't last long.
So how'd they really get you back?
Jean-Claude. It's twisted, John.
How would you like to approach this, gentlemen, ladies?
Well, you guys come here to discuss the budget, we're not entirely sure what you want to discuss.
Well, I guess we were preparing to send out...
The budget.
Budget forms and requests, and then any input you wanted to give us as to how... I guess we have the inevitable discussion of where we're going to start this budget, are we going to start at zero, less than zero, some number more than zero? You know, we usually send out a directive to the departments that we think we're going to be here, or over there somewhere, money-wise.
With a zero-based budget, how much do you even say where we're going to be? You've got to ask them to bring back exactly what they need, and then show us what they need. I mean, if they come up and say, you need many dollars, we all agree, you need all that, I think it's our job to go to the town and...
Well, in the past, I think we've given some discretion at this, or direction at this point in time, saying, this is where we think we're going towards.
I think the letter that was sent out, you drafted it. You sent it out already?
Yeah. It was a zero-based budget, but what percentages are you asking for personnel, for wages?
Well, again, zero-based budget, and I don't think we ask for any increases in personnel, that's something you folks apply to the top of it, once you decide what to give. So just actual salary for the year, and, you know, the fringe amount of percentage, you can have that, and they just build it up from there. And if there's across-the-board anything, you folks would vote on that and just layer it across.
But that's after we know what they requested and what we've decided on.
And what we look at for the revenue coming in, because you may look at the revenue coming in, saying, boy, you know, we haven't given you an increase in the last time, we're giving you three percent, because we've got it, or, sorry, we don't have it. But that's more or less, I think, you folks. So do you think starting at level funding and just moving forward from there, without...
No, it's not level funding, it's zero-based.
Well, you know what, just starting from there, just to start. Well, again, zero-based budget, you know, Chief is here. Chief Silver, he was up for a talk, over a talk, zero-based budget.
That's just...
For him, I think it's going to be a good way, because he has certain things that come up, like the vests and all that stuff, that he has to put in there and have a reoccurring amount. And by having certain line items, we can see exactly what they want. I think in the past, we haven't been able to do that, kind of a fog. So this way, you'll see everything, and you can understand what they need.
So it is altogether different from past years, where we said, zero increase, balanced budget.
Yeah.
So you want, you want to show all your numbers, and if you're going to justify stuff, this is the time to justify it.
Yeah, because you could say that people were balancing your budget, and my department, I bought a bunch of specific stuff last year, but I'm not going to need this year. So to me, I'm getting an increase, you know? I just don't know what, I mean, the state revenue, I mean, you know how that all affects what we get? Yeah. For state funding, so I mean, that's what we've been really dealing with those couple of years, where we was like a seven percent cut, eleven percent cut throughout the year. Once we'd already done a budget, there was a cut in state aid sometime in November, December, and we had to sort of backtrack and do things. You know, I think the economy's sort of moving forward, but I don't want to get the mindset that, okay, let's go back to the way it was before, which is spending money. We still have to be very conservative, I think. Well, at least my experience, zero-based budget, you can't spend money that you don't justify. And the way we do it now, just tack on, you're hiding a lot under here, you know? I just have to justify this new amount, because you've already told me this is okay. Now we're saying it's not okay, tell it's why. You know, and people, departments like Ed's department, some years, he's going to have a spike in the budget, because he needs this, other years it'll go down, because he doesn't need that this year. You know? And if we ask Chief Silver, he'll put in a cruiser, you know, maybe every other year he has one, so. Have you talked to the department heads and see if they're comfortable with basing the budget, displaying, doing the budget differently like this? No, that was a notice that Reggie sent out.
No, no conversation was discussed with those departments.
But it really isn't up, I mean, it's up to us, and the finance department decide how we're going to do this, you know, I mean...
And this sounds crap, but it doesn't matter if they feel comfortable with it, if that's the right way to do it. Well, I mean, I shouldn't say comfortable, but showing how to do it, this other way doing it. Right, exactly, you're going to use systems on how to do it. And that's what I'm trying to say.
So they can come to you and give them some, you can do a drive run with them?
We now took some library trustees a couple of weeks ago, because they weren't sure how to put maintenance and other things, and we explained it to them, and they went back, and we thought they were pretty happy with it.
I think it's like when you said you wanted a street sweeper, well, you certainly put that in your budget, and you certainly may need it, but we may, you guys may not agree that they need it this year, you may cut that back out. But at least it gives you an idea of what the department, where they're headed, where they want to spend the money, and then you guys can justify whether or not it's a proper expense.
Well, that's another issue, I mean, in years past, we had a capital needs budget, and I do think that has fallen by the wayside. And it was a guide for you guys to look at and see what was affordable, and I know you were able to plug some items in there you could support. But, you know, on these capital items, these are capital items that not necessarily are in your budget, how do you want to handle those? I mean, I know Reggie had on the cover letter, if everything goes well, pick three projects you could do that would be, if there's money, we could address them. Is this where you want your capital items? Is this where you...
I guess it was when she said, pick three projects, and we all go around the table, public enterprise projects are entirely different, you make the streets sweep, or somebody say like, group, you know?
I know, so, I mean, it might be, we need to give some effort in that direction, and also related department ends, I would think.
So the capital improvement committee...
Shouldn't be part of the operation budget, in my mind, but should be a separate attachment that can be grouped together, and somebody evaluate it, if there's no capital needs committee.
There's not, the committee's gone, or just...
I don't know, I know this board would like to see it come back. I think it's just a matter of volunteers, and there's not a lot of volunteers that are coming forward.
I think it's resolved, because there was really no money to be spent, because of the way the economy was for the past three or four years.
And well, and that, those items are probably still on the budget for the most part.
Well, should we define a capital item as, you know, X amount, period of life, over this, and send out a separate...
Right, we've done that.
...number, saying, this is separate from the operating budget, please send us your list, and, you know, your...
Yeah, and take it out of here.
At least we could do something, because I know there's, we haven't been able to address the capital needs for a couple of years away, I think the town would like to, but now repairs are getting costly, things are getting more expensive to do, and breakdowns are being more of a concern, at least on my equipment.
Deferred payments, that would be...
Who's going to draft, who's going to draft the definition of capital?
We already have it.
We already have it.
But I think you guys, could you guys explain it to them, so they can sort of call out what they actually want to put on the capital? Do we want to put a meeting together, where we meet with all the department heads, and do we want to put, do we have the budget sheets ready to go out?
They've already been sent out, we have a tentative all-boards meeting on January twenty-second.
But I need to be focused on one thing, that's going to be the budget, and how to go through the new changes in the budget, and how to sort of delineate those things out, to be on the capital, and how to build the budget.
We can do that.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good reason to get everybody together, and we can discuss other things, but that'll be the focus.
Absolutely. We have some sample budget sheets we can go through.
So the twenty-second, January, use that meeting for discussion on budgeting?
And let the departments know, so...
Johnny, have you developed a schedule for meeting?
Not yet.
That was going to be my next question, have you guys set your schedules for department heads?
You were going to do a preliminary with Vicki, so you, Vicki, and us should get together and come up with a schedule.
The only reason I'm asking that is I like to see this board interview the department heads too, and know what they're talking.
Okay.
Make that, maybe not the same week, but the week before, the week after, when they meet them, so everything's fresh.
I think it's important to go into town meeting, we're all on the same page. If not, it's... I hear you.
And then I have a question, what about a percentage put aside for savings off of the free cash?
On the stabilization.
For both accounts, have you thought about that, has anybody?
Well, we have to see what... I was still sort of waiting for the true number, we have a ballpark number, but we're not a hundred percent sure if it's going to be that much.
How close to that, is it being confirmed, that free cash number?
It's just estimated.
Any idea when it might be confirmed?
Before town meeting.
February.
Yeah, before, yeah.
Mike has always been a strong proponent of putting as much in as possible. And we talked about at one point, maybe a certain percentage of free cash every year, whether it's fifty percent or whatever, should automatically be sent into the stabilization funds.
Right. And we spent, we took some of that, didn't we?
Twenty, twenty thousand.
Stabilization, twenty thousand.
Twenty, that was a good thing we had there.
Yeah, but we still have, you have over a hundred thousand, and the operational is over twenty thousand.
That was a hundred and twelve.
Well, the other thing too is, we don't know, we don't know how much money we're going to probably need for school roof.
Right.
So miscellaneous costs are going to be associated with that, so, I mean...
It's a half a million dollars at least.
I know, but I'm just saying, um...
That's not going to be on the budget though.
No, but, you know...
Right, it's going to be, we're going to go to a bond, aren't we?
But there's processing fees and stuff like that, that, you know...
Can you roll that into the bond though?
Probably, probably.
Do you feel like fifty percent would be something to set aside, I mean? Of free cash? Yeah. I mean, that's a nice number, I just... But it could be, some free cash could be four thousand some year.
Well...
But you're just, but always thinking half of what you have of free cash, stow it away, and then try to build up the funds. Yeah, use that as a starting point, but the only issue is, if you get all these requests, and you determine all the requests are valid for the departments, you may have to go back and say, ah...
Well, here's the other thing too, is, we had the annual town meeting, you know, we've always gone to this nasty habit of waiting for free cash to take care of problems that we couldn't resolve then. We still have problems out there from departments that have been sitting and waiting for this, and we don't know what those numbers are going to be, we can guess, but, you know, I'm firmly believe we should be putting money away in both those funds, but we also should be looking at all items, as far as I'm concerned, trying to address some of our most crucial things we haven't been able to address. And being proactive to save money, and some spending still would be helpful.
Yeah, but those are three...
I know.
...things, because they all take the same money. Yeah, but you'll spend the money if you get your hands on it, so I'm more in favor of sticking it aside, and... But the only, and I agree with you, but that was, the only issue is, that when you put it there, especially in the capital stabilization, like you had taken off the capital in the town meeting, even in the operational, you had the town meeting, you get the votes, so it's not as easy to play around with after that.
Which, which means we're forced to keep it and only spend it judiciously. Which, which means we, we're forced to keep it and only spend it judiciously.
Oh, yeah, but if you really need it, you don't have any flexibility, so 50% is good, but is it high?
Well, some of the costs I'm talking about, a piece of equipment you're dumping 30, 40,000 dollars into, just to keep it running, when you really shouldn't be dumping that and wasting that money with only a year of effort, and only to get rid of it because it's devaluated. Not fixing roads and bridges properly, it's corny as it sounds, but $10 fix here might prevent a $100 repair later on, and this is the type of stuff I'm talking about. Whether it's the highway, police, or fire, there are things out there that's more cost efficient and effective. We should be looking at those things, fixing today versus the.
Well, I think overall, it's really a great idea to think about saving and keeping these two accounts as full as we can, but you can't do that before you've met basic needs that we've been putting off, like deferred maintenance. I mean, we cost more in the end if we let it, keep on letting it go, so we don't think you should be so rigid, you should be so rigid before we know what our real costs are.
I mean, can't we make a goal? Goal or, yeah.
Goal is always good.
I mean, the other side of, and the more we can get into those accounts, granted, it, sometimes we sacrifice, but later on, if something, we need money for a piece of machinery or something, once that money's in there, we're a lot better off than taking and borrowing, incurring those expenses if we have the money set aside to buy something, and then we have time to replenish that money again before we need it again.
I don't think we all agree we should, you know, increase it, and be proactive and let people know we're doing that. We always, when you come down the end of the line, you go, oops.
Well, we always talk about, like, you know, since I've been here, it's always been during budgetary season, it's a shooting match. It's just sort of like this, that, or the other thing, and I always thought it was important to have some guiding principles of what you're going to do. And I think the first rule is Phelan's Rule, the first rule, which was.
Phelan's Rule?
We are not going to balance the budget with free cash. And we've been able to do that how many times?
What was his rule?
Mike, those were your first things, we're not going to balance the budget.
No, I don't think you should be, because it's, that's, that's a crap shoot every year anyway. You can't, you can't plan on free cash. It's like you can't plan on state aid. State aid should be planned at, at the minimum, and whatever extra we get is a bonus and we can do things with.
I, I take the problem there. We all, we all agree with that, but we get to the point where if you don't take some of the free cash, you cut services so much, can't run a town.
Well, I agree with you.
That is huge.
Guiding principles of how we want to do this, because again, it's just sort of hodgepodge every year.
But I think we also, we don't want to use free cash. We want to put it into the stabilization fund, build those up where the, where we have the needs, and then we give reality towards the end, saying, okay, we've got to change our thoughts a bit. But I like the idea of having those guiding principles and try to stick to them by all means.
All right, anything else?
I'll favor that.
All right, anything else? We're at the start of a long process that ends in May.
Well, I think it's going to be better this year with the zero base, so, it's more work on the department heads, but I think they're going to be able to actually clarify their needs better. There may be some groaning and all that, but I think once they get into it, they're going to say, oh, yeah, I need this, and be able to tell us a lot.
You're, you're not going to have any meetings between now and that, January 20?
22nd.
22nd, our.
Today is the eighth.
That's only the week after.
Yeah, but, so you're not going to meet with any departments before then?
No, no.
So.
Do we really have to meet with Reggie and Vicki to figure it out?
So that meeting will set the tone, and from there, we can go, we'll go off of that.
And that's the regular six or seven o'clock?
Yeah.
John, just a quick question. Does DLR offer any free software to help department heads structure their budget? Is there any software that would be able to be able to use, so you all could go into one access and go back and change numbers instead of always passing the paper around and scratching this line off and adding?
Checkbooks or something?
Yeah, something like that. Is there something like that?
That it was on the edge and.
I'm coming from the states I work with, this is a very simple budget process. Probably it's why people don't, I think we can help through it, you know, because that would, that would work. Even if they want to commit one.
So you want to skip that?
Just a couple of us sit down and go over it. No, I think that would be fine.
If you structure your budget, your spreadsheets, you can take those and link those together, and it'll link into the budget. So as people adjust their budgets, it'll come and make a final change to the overall budget.
Is there any way we can start working our machines into their, our iPads, so that we're all using the same?
They don't have iPads. We, we think we should get iPads, it's just us.
I have mine.
Well, I'm thinking, saves duplicating the work about.
All you have to do is if.
Long story.
You put all the spreadsheets in one workbook, you just send that around, and everybody's working.
Right, but I'm just saying, so that we, we're all using the same, the whole purpose of these was to save time and effort.
We have an extra electronic cell?
Not only, yeah, that's, not only that, but to display on the projector. The projector's not working right now, that's the.
Do we have an extra iPad? I thought we had an extra.
We do.
Can the chairman from finance have that? So as we go through the budgetary system, we can connect and use the Apple software? Is that, is that possible?
Box, reach him up there, huh?
They can have mine too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I talked to Reggie today. That form is very difficult for me to put all my information on it, and so I suggested that we use, the form we used last year, okay, because the information will not, my, my information is like 10 tall pages, and it won't fit on that kind of form you gave me.
I'll just, I'm going to take his, I'm, I'm going to take his information and just do insert lines, and I'll, I'll input it that way. And then I'll send it to you guys, so you'll see a working spreadsheet.
Yeah, because that rollup is, is great.
Yeah.
But the definitions, you'll have to go down to the comments. It's not like it's going to be one definition for me, there's going to be hundreds of definitions. So you're going to have to be diligent, make sure they're cross. All the time.
He's old.
We tried that today.
We've all grown old in this job. All right.
I'll give it to you as tight as possible, but she can give it to you in her form, it's fine.
Everybody's line item shows up on the screen now.
Yeah, but we're not everybody. We have, I got, I got about 30 line items.
Try and get 80%, of the people, so that the first row is like wages, the next row is expenses, and you can have the departments that please hire. You, it will be a little bit more difficult to be manual process, because basically, we should roll into your master budget.
Without, with or without the definitions, the comments?
Like I said, yours is going to be.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And you'll have to do a little manual playing with it, but it should essentially roll up to some, some row, and then roll over to the budget.
Sounds like it's going to make great year.
All right, we'll see what it's like in May.
From a compliance point of view.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you. Happy, happy new year.
Mike, I just want to say, before they leave, I was just curious, do, do they have a system of departments to send to the board and Reggie, what have you, about the equipment they have, and the estimate time it lasts, and is, so that we have an idea, so if equipment fails, all of a sudden, we don't have to budget?
We have that. She asks for it every year. Diane asks for it every year, and before that was asked all the time. It was always, it's a, it's an annual thing, when I do.
Does every department do it, so that we're not surprised by?
Only those who have the equipment, only those who have, like Ed has the most equipment, yes.
And the offices, copiers, and what have you, the whole?
That's, I just started that this year, or last year, 2012.
So that we can budget, so that we're not going, oh, my God, we got to.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Especially for technology.
Missing cruiser last year. Was it last year, the missing cruiser?
Cruiser was taken out of the budget.
Without telling us.
A lost cruiser.
We disappeared it.
Thank you.
Highway meeting's not here, right? Oh, they're not supposed to be here. We're discussing proposals. Oh, we're discussing.
Oh, you got it, I see. So.
Do you want to do that now, go back to?
Oh, um, or can we put, I don't know.
Okay, we can finish the chief.
Oh, yeah, all right, you want to go back to, let's do the fire chief. I hate to kind of break up, break up the momentum. Do you have, do you have the, the?
Back to page, oh, no.
Well, and we have the old fire chief one on here, under personnel. Right, this is the one, experience is seven to 10, is that the one? Oh, that's.
Where is it? Where is it gone?
There's one under, the old fire chief one is under the personnel.
Yeah, it's really short, it's a bunch of bullets.
And there's, there's one from modified three weeks ago, one, which one is that that was modified three weeks ago?
The one with Norwood, with your incorporated changes.
Oh, all right, so there's, under the personnel issue of your drop box, there's a fire chief job description three weeks ago, which is the Norwood one, modified three weeks ago, which is the Norwood one with our suggested changes. And then the one below that is the fire chief from, the original fire chief one, from, what was that company? MRI?
Yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't follow that one.
Which is the one that has the amended, the Norris amended one?
That is the fire chief with modified three weeks ago.
But we didn't change education, is that?
Well, I, I was looking at the original one, so I'm going to look right now.
Because I'm looking at.
Correct.
That's.
We did, we did.
Still in there, so.
It's still in there.
That's.
But the, but the italicized print is the changes that we decided to, we, we talked about making. So we didn't change that.
I'm just going to say, I'm a little lost which one you're actually looking at.
That's the one we modified. That's.
This is the one that's been modified.
Which one's the one?
Norwood.
Yeah, that's the one, I mean, Norwood.
I can even teach people where they are. That's scary. I couldn't turn mine on to start. So again, the italicized print is the changes we voted to, either voted or discussed making.
Correct.
But we did not yet modify the education.
Correct.
We did change some of the.
Yeah.
I mean, compare that to the one underneath, which is the bulleted one.
The bulleted one, I don't even want to look at, it's just.
How we paid them so much money for that?
So let's look at the modified ones, just focus on one of them. Is that, if that's okay, Michael?
Well, yes, it is. I was just trying to see what the educational requirements were under it.
Let's look at the education.
Under this one, under the.
So it's saying a bachelor's degree in fire science or related field.
No, I mean, under the, I'm looking at the old one. What did we say about education?
Didn't say any education?
No. It just said seven to 10 years firefighter training one.
I'm on this one here. I switched to the normal.
Well, can you just change the education to bachelor's degree in fire science or related field?
Or seven to eight, 10 years?
So that way, it doesn't exclude candidates.
Well, no, you wouldn't.
No.
Or a minimum of 10 years progressive responsible experience in fireworks.
I think that takes care of it.
So take, take out the N, the little arrow, make it a or. Does that work?
Yeah.
Well, you got the italicized one, five years in supervisory position within a full-time or call department, and successfully, well, and successfully complete the NEPA firefighting training. Those are for full-time departments, and it could be optional, but I don't think it's necessary. Just a point of reference, Chief Kalia, am I right to say that those are for full-time departments?
I would think a lot of that, you'd go with a full-time department where you have full-time personnel around the block.
Well, just, and, and, not to cut the chief off, but that was a requirement, the firefighter one training was a requirement in the MRI contract. We didn't have an educational component, we had that component. Our component, experienced seven to 10 years, five years supervisor within a full-time volunteer department, successfully completed the National Fire, 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 Firefighting Training One curriculum or equivalent, and Massachusetts firefighter certification was the requirement for Chief Hyde.
No. It was.
It was?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think he had it. That's where we were.
That's what's the italicized.
That's, that's where we got that language from. Just for curiosity's sake, what do you have? Okay.
It says or equivalent, Michael.
Yeah, no, I just.
Three years of service.
No, and, I just, why ask?
You say three years of service?
Twenty to 23.
But that, that was in the original MRI requirements, was the firefighter one.
So, I mean, the other thing I think we have to look at is whether or not to have the bachelor's degree in there.
Well, and then they're saying that the firefighter one is a problem also.
Well, it says or equivalent.
I, I, I like the idea that we have 10 years of progressive responsible experience in fire and rescue, emergency management, emergency medical service and management. I think that's the key, number one. I think the equivalent of education experience is, is also something you should be considering, but to have a bachelor's degree with minimal or, or experience, I don't think is, is, is going to do us, as well as having somebody that has experience. In my department.
So Ed, you're thinking experience trumps education in this case?
In this case, yes, because it's mostly a practical job.
I would agree.
You know?
But it sounds like David's thinking a little bit differently about that.
No, I just, I don't know. What I always try to do when I'm making a decision for the town of Southampton is to sort of look at the other 350-some-odd towns in Massachusetts, and how they've come up with decisions, and their thinking behind that. When we're looking at doing things like this. But we didn't have bachelor's degree in there in the past, when we went through the process before, so I'm okay with taking that out of here at this time. I, I look at the italicized part, and it says firefighter training one curriculum or equivalent. So it doesn't say it has to be, it has to say or equivalent.
My, my concern, and it's open for discussion, is that, yeah, there's 365 communities. 360 something, whatever, maybe 67. We need to know that probably 200 of them are probably in the 6,000 range of population, and I would believe most of them, if not, most of them, if not all of them, are not, and I might be wrong, and I probably am wrong, on this academy training, because most of them are call, volunteer, fire departments.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm agreeing then, to take the leadership.
Comes most of the time from these personnel.
But when you look at the italicize, if you read that, Mike, it says or equivalent?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. Can I make a suggestion, or can I ask a question? Chief, what town in our area is equivalent to your department? Anybody?
Granby?
That's a, that's a part-time volunteer, on-call, 6,000 residents. You're part of the Chiefs Association now, aren't you?
Right, but I'm going to go to a meeting because I can't get time.
Oh, gosh.
We work you too hard.
Granby comes up a lot. I'm not sure what they have. I believe Granby's full-time though.
Well, I'm, I'm curious if you could get to one of those meetings and come up and get a, a job description from somebody within the organization, if that's possible, or is there some, some, some executive officer that we could contact?
Sure, I, I can get a call tomorrow and see what I could come up with.
And then pass that, if you can't get it, pass it to Reggie, and, and we'll see what we can come up with from that. How, how does that sound, everybody?
Well, rather than put him in a position, could you give the board a couple of names? And that, we would ask them to look at these qualifications, and maybe Chief Modder?
That's what I was going to say, Chief Modder, and he's standing to call. He's been around long enough, he would have an idea. Or you could call Chief Norris in West Hampton.
Yeah, he runs all small departments as well as, he's full-time in East North Hampton.
He's a deputy chief.
And he's, he's got a doctorate, I believe, or a masters.
He's a deputy chief in West Hampton, and he's also the chief of West Hampton.
We want, is that a way we want to go and try and get?
Well, any information we can get is good, I think.
I know we want to get this posted, but it sounds like this isn't the one we want to work with.
Well, I like to have somebody that has the experience as a fire, fire chief, to come back and say, you don't need this, you need this. And it might be something that we're missing completely, you might want to add in here. So my recommendation, we can wait a couple more weeks to finalize this. Send it out to a couple of chiefs, and ask for their comments, and get it back.
Well, going back to the Fire Chiefs Association, who's your contact there? Who do you, who do you talk to?
I'd have to go and go up, see who actually is the president, because I belong to two different organizations.
Is there one that's like Hampshire County?
Yes, there is.
So you find out what Hampshire County is, and send a copy of this, and say, what do you think of this, we're drafting this. You just let them take a pen to it, see what they recommend. We just throw it out there.
Well, I just didn't want to have the chief involved with this process.
Well, you get the contact to Reggie, we'll send out a letter and say, can you just sort of give us a comment, what you think, or?
Or we could ask for, ask them to give us a minimum, what they think are minimum requirements. All right, is that the plan now?
Yeah.
We're going to put this aside.
Probably two weeks.
We'll put this aside, we'll try and see if we can get some local input, and go over there.
Mike, Michael.
Yes?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Off subject a little bit, but I just want to know, if you're getting enough help because you're working a lot of hours, has anything changed from the last time we talked to you, is there anything we can do to help you?
You an EMT? No, I get the process of hiring EMTs. It's, now it's probably getting all the new hires up to speed, so they can take teams, and, it's getting easier. As you know, there's been a big turnover, I've, people have left, I've hired, and there's probably a few more that may leave, and I also have a few more new hires coming. I think the department gets stagnant, and people just want to be there, but they don't want to do a whole lot, so I'm trying to beat them out, get new people in, but by doing that, you get a brand new person that's only been in the EMT six months, you have trouble putting them right out on an ambulance, so it's going to take time.
Anything else? So right now, we're putting the chief's description, job description aside for two weeks until we get a little bit more information.
Feedback from.
Okay.
And I'll say one more thing, sorry. When we had our meeting, and we were interviewing the Girl Scouts, a gentleman came in, Reggie, you could talk about the gentleman that came in and talked.
Mark Danty.
Right.
I'm probably saying it wrong. That's one of the letters that you had sent to the board, gave to the board. He was thanking you for a job well done.
Yes.
Your department for a job well done.
Yes.
Yeah, he came in, and he was just so amazed, and he was so thankful, and I just wanted to mention that he did a good job, and thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the chief? Nope, moving on. We have no disability forms, we have reappointments, we've done, one-day licenses, none, town order arrangements, none. We have the SNE contract. You guys got a, there was a lot of emails this week, so I didn't get a chance to read, I'll read one of them myself, but I. You want to tell us about this?
Both of us can tell. I asked for some additional services in SNE's contract for to, well, let me back it up again. We had two problems with air handlers and air exchangers that failed, because the pillar blocks did not have grease fittings on them, and wore out two drive shafts, and cost us some money, plus it also cost us some air exchanges to part of the building for about a month. So with that in mind, I wanted all the, the belts checked, all the pillar blocks checked, all the pulleys and anything that was mechanical on the air exchangers, and to give us a price. He gave us a price that would increase the contract, I don't know, about $3,000, plus or minus. Reggie asked for a couple other prices, and I had no problem with that. The prices she had, I just want to make sure that the, when these prices are compared, we compare them to, these people, if they, if they are going to come on board, and they are the lowest bidder and the most accepted bidder, they're going to have to interface with our software, and they don't have the ability to interface with our software, because software is a proprietary thing from SNE. So there's additional costs that I believe might be associated to this that need to be done, and if that's the case, we should, we bid the three of them with be done, and if that's the case, we should rebid the three of them with all the same bells and whistles. And I think, Reggie, you do agree with that.
So, are we taking any action on the SNE contract?
My choice is wait until we put it out for three bids with all possible information for the three of them to bid on.
So, just your air conditioning for this building is what you're talking about?
What's that?
The maintenance.
It's not the-
Contract.
Yeah. There's, we didn't have air exchangers in this building before, now we do. We have air conditioning units, we have air that has to be sucked out and transferred kind of, and it's all computerized. It's all handled by a computer. But people, when they do work on it, has to interface with that software, and I just want to make sure the two bidders that are giving us quotes are going to be able to do that.
What are we changing the contract with this stuff?
Because of dollar amount.
The dollar amount.
Yeah.
But we would get the same, if they can't interface with the computer system that we currently have-
Then they need to take those dollar amounts and add it into their contract, because we shouldn't be penalized for doing that.
It's gotta be three equal bids and three equal requirements.
Then they're not familiar with the system.
Correct, but they're not ignorant to the system. They're all HVAC people and they, you know, they've worked on these boilers, both of them have, okay? But the point is, when you do a repair on one of these new boilers, you have to activate the software, give it new information to be able to function. That's all.
So, we prefer to somebody who already knows the software. Instead of break something else.
You're not going, it's proprietary software. It's theirs, we don't own it. Okay? That's what the particulars in-
We can work that out.
Sure, at some point, I'd like to just work whenever it's convenient.
On this issue or something else?
Make right-
On this issue or something else?
No, something else.
Okay.
All right. I'm asking to table it for now, Reggie and I will work on this.
So, the point is, they're going to bid out a maintenance contract, and we've got, SNE gave a quote of, is it 3,000 or something?
Well, it's close to four, but they still have a year and a half to go on the existing contract. What they originally offered us was a change, was an amendment to the contract with the new dollar amount, and the prices she got were just for that work separately. So, we need to take the amended stuff out and bid it-
As a unified-
All unified, everybody has the same things they're looking at.
Is it a big enough number that we have to bid, or can we do telephone bids?
It can be quotes, but we want to identify what's going to be done, because if somebody says, "Oh, I can do it for 3,000," and we say, "Well, you got to interface with that computer software, the technician's coming down, you're paying for that, we're not," you know, that's all.
Okay. But it's an effort to get a maintenance contract on the heating and HVC in this building.
I thought we already had one.
We do, we do.
But it doesn't cover everything.
But there were some other things we had that were a one-year warranty, warranty is gone, and things that they need special attention.
It's complicated.
Yes.
Yeah.
The intermediate, I'll be back in a second here. Inter, why am I having trouble tonight? Interim Town Administrator's Report, Reggie faxed you out that, or not faxed, I'm showing my age, emailed you out the long discussion. Do we need to go over any of that, or is everybody on board with what's going on?
Just a couple of changes in regards to the highway superintendent. I think when I talked to you, I said I was gonna leave at the end of July, she's got on the first of July. That was my last day of working was the end of July, and I was going to take my vacation into October.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
Which brings up the issue of succession.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to talk about it now?
Can we draft anybody from town, just make one make?
You'd have to ask him.
Do I want to draft anybody? No, I think the job has to be posted. Anybody that is qualified in the department wants to come forward should be able to apply for it.
So, we need another job description.
Yeah, there's a job description. I think Reggie had one.
We do, we need an update.
Yeah, I have an updated one. Well, updated to the point that it might be a year and a half, a little bit older than the one you have.
Can we get that in for the next meeting to try and decide what we're gonna do with that one?
Yeah.
Seems like we're replacing it.
Well, it's, the new one is all encumbrance with all these other things I've been doing for the years.
All right, does anybody have any other questions on that rather than leaving?
The only thing I would say is that if we're going to transition things at this point, I know that people showed up at the town meeting and said they were taking away their votes, but the DOR did recommend that we go to a public works department. And one of my concerns is that Ed, who through the years has been operating like a public works department-
And the new guy's going to also.
He has to.
Yeah.
He has to. Or we go back to town meeting and we try to push forward to change over to a public works again.
Whoever we hire is going to act as, is going to be called the highway superintendent and act as a DPW.
Okay. I just, you know, things work well now, so I just don't want to go-
I don't see any alternative. This is your job description, this is what you do, you're called the highway superintendent.
We expect you to do all these things.
Right.
Bowing the cemetery.
Right.
I just have a question for Reggie. Was that the email that had that link to open public meeting regulations that we need to take?
Yes. Did it not, was the link not live?
Um-
It was, okay.
It's its website.
Okay.
And just so we can have public flogging-
Well-
I wasn't here.
I wasn't here, but it's serious, was.
And I'm still not positive, but the punishment was such a minor one, it doesn't seem like it makes sense to argue over it. I still think we were entitled to negotiate a real estate contract in private as opposed to an open session.
But they did have a good point, there were two lawyers from either side.
But we were negotiating with them as the owners of the property, and just picture if we were negotiating in open session and someone said, "Well, you paid 50,000, I'll pay 55,000 for the property," and ran in and took that deal away from us.
But weren't they court-appointed guardians?
Yeah, it was like negotiating with the person.
Yeah.
We were negotiating with the person. They weren't, that person wasn't in, well, he was here some of the time, but we were negotiating with him. But you got to watch in, what, a 30-minute video?
Is it something that is online, something?
Yeah, something online.
And you have 90 days to do it.
Right.
Oh, we should send by 30 minutes some afternoon and read it.
We could do it here some night.
So, what?
We do, we do need to take it seriously and do it.
Yeah, I'm planning to.
No, no, we're taking it seriously, but someone, some one of us doesn't have to do it because they went to-
Jackie doesn't.
Jackie doesn't have to do it? Why don't you keep us on the straight and narrow then? Jackie went to the thing, so she doesn't have to do it.
We weren't here, Dave.
I wasn't here.
No.
We all were.
We weren't here in April.
We weren't here in April. I would've said this is going to be-
We weren't here in April.
Can't go into executive session for this. I know better, Michael.
Mike, it's just us.
I would, still, if it wasn't so darn expensive, I would challenge it, but we got to watch a video.
It's worth the video.
We got to watch a video, so that's how serious it is.
Here's a video, you have a video?
No, you got to go online and watch it through the-
Oh, okay.
You got to watch it through the-
And they track you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, how do you sign on?
Just go to the website.
Go to the website.
You probably have to.
So, just for all, everyone in town who thinks we're being investigated?
We take our responsibilities seriously.
Seriously.
Yeah, and we're gonna-
All right, where are we?
We lost.
So, that's that. Fire chief's job description, we already did. Oh, Gary, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, you kind of covered some of what I was concerned about. As you know, I don't darken your doorstep too often.
Like, when you do, you darken it.
I have a concern, and my concern right now is how long it's taken this board to, really to reestablish the level of professional management that we've had and what the town years ago mandated that this board provide professional administrative services. Now, just as I, you know, we extended Reggie's temporary status for another three months. Now, it'll make one year and nine months. Though I understand you like Reggie, I like Reggie, what's not to like? The problem is that about four out of five of you at least can understand, you're all highly educated, trained professionals in your respective professions.
Who's the fifth one?
I was, we don't even see anything. Who got left out at any point?
I can't speak to Jackie because all I know is she made fun of the idea of, you know, the idea of having a master's degree in professional management. About a month ago, I happened to notice that, but anyway, that's not my point. My point simply is that it has been-
Well, excuse me, excuse me. I never make fun of education. I have never made fun of people with a master's degree. I respect people that have education. Thank you.
Okay. That's not my point anyway.
Well.
All of what I'm trying to say is that the town, this is a $14 million corporation, and I don't care whether it's private or public. The fact of the matter is that management of something that big is a profession. It requires knowledge and professionalism. It's been brought up, but pretty much, I understand, you know, you may be trying to save a buck, whatever, but the town did mandate this level of professional management. And if your board is going to deviate from that, you really have to put an article in for the next town meeting that you no longer wish to have professional town administration and put it up as a vote for the people. Perhaps the town would like to save a few bucks. But the fact of the matter is, ever since Diana Schindler left, that's been the end of professional management in the town of Southampton. We do need, now, I understand you're going to put out another job, you know, a job-
Description.
Posting. I understand also that you voted to take the professional component or the educational component out of it, at least partially. It's not mandatory, as I understand it. But I would certainly hope that this board, in looking at applications, would give the same value to professionalism that you all give to your own businesses and to the things that you do. David, you're not gonna want some fool going in and, you know, being painted by the brush, you know, having him doing, you know, serving somebody as a doctor anymore than my kids as a lawyer. You all have reasons to be trained. The same thing applies to the town.
I was involved with getting administrator's position here, as you know, going back to the DOR-
Right.
Report of 2004, and I think there was a repeat one in 2007 talking about that, and we did try to get the town clerk's position and the town tax collector as appointed positions as well as, and we talked about the DPH just now, all three of those were shot down by the town. But we were able to get the town administrator, and I think-
And I spoke against it at that time.
All right, and as chairman, I gave you the floor and I appreciate that, and I understand your point. I'm just a little disappointed because you've really got five people that sit up here that provide the structure for the town, the administrator serves at our will. If you're telling me that if we voted not to rehire somebody, we'd have to go to the town to get that position eliminated, I would disagree with you. We could choose not to fill the position, and I don't think there was anything, I don't think the town mandated the position in that sense. They voted to accept the position, but I don't think they mandated the position. If we chose not to fill the chief collegiate's position, there wouldn't be any consequence to that either. It's hard-
Choose not to fill the position, Mike, at least you have an obligation to tell everybody.
Well, and the other truth of the matter is, I've been on the board now for almost eight years. I mean, we've constructed a town hall and we've done a lot of other things along the way, and certainly that has gotten sidetracked, but we've made a number of efforts at doing this, and at this point in time, I would, I would take some offense at the fact that the town's not being managed professionally, because I think there's certainly several advanced degrees that sit at this table amongst ourselves, and I think the town gets the benefit of all of those educational components. And frankly, there's a number of people in the service who follow a sergeant into battle rather than an educated lieutenant, and the educational component doesn't always mean something. It certainly is an advantage, but it doesn't always create the best of leadership, and I think that's what we're looking for when we're advertising the position. And I understand somebody else wants to speak, but I'm going to bring us back onto track because we have a long meeting here. So, I appreciate your comments, and does anybody on the board want to address the issue?
I think we're moving forward, Gary, and I hear your words. You know, I think there's been a lot of sidetracking where, you know, I wasn't here for a year, so I don't know exactly how things got to this point. I think there should have been, in retrospect, in my thought, if I was here, that perhaps we should have posted the position within six months. I think, you know, when you delay doing something, it just sort of festers a little bit, but I think it should have been posted six, within six months of Ms. Schindler leaving here. I don't know when that was, I think it was two Julys ago.
Five, 2001.
Yeah, so I think at that point, it should have probably been posted, but again, I think there are other things that have been going on. I think this board, as long as I've been on it for a year off since '04, we've always tried to be very professional as best we can. One of the things I'd like to comment about the administrator position is that there's a difference between pre-administrator selectmen and post-administrator selectmen. My experience without an administrator was that I spent a lot of face time with Chief Silverdale, Buggin' the Highway Super, Buggin' the Fire Chief, because with my time constraints running around as a physician, I wanted to make some time to know what the issues were. But once you have a town administrator, one of the things I saw is that select persons that came onto the board after that were not used to that sort of face-to-face with the departments. It got filtered through one person. So, there's some disadvantages to that, to having administrator, because the selectmen could then be disconnected from the departments that they're truly representing, and I saw some of that.
I've never felt that the board should have a disconnect.
But I saw some of that because you were then taking all the information from one person that was, you know, taken as fact.
It was a filter.
It was a filter through all the issues, and I think that's one of the reasons I had a falling over with Mrs. Schindler. Mrs. Schindler is that some of the information that I thought was important was being filtered out of the process and being whitened, and some of that was misleading, and that's my personal opinion.
I understand fully what you're saying. All that I'm saying is that we should have professional-
We're working towards that goal, and we're gonna move on from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Swanson?
Well, I was trying to get back on track, and we'll come back if we have time for-
No, it's okay. This is your, your turn.
All right, Mrs. Swanson.
I guess my question is, and I watched your December 4th meeting pretty carefully, and I thought your board voted to go ahead and post and advertise, am I correct, Reggie? And it was supposed to be on MMA, you said you're gonna-
It's in the hands of the personnel board right now.
Okay.
It has to follow the procedures of going through the channels, the posting.
So, it's with personnel policies now?
Correct.
Personnel policy has an incident for tomorrow night, but only to rescore it.
So, my question is, because it's been five weeks, I mean, they can rescore it, but you certainly have an opportunity to advertise. I'm just wondering why it's taken eighteen months to advertise this position?
Why has it taken four weeks to get the fire chief's contract? Because we couldn't-
I'm not answering-
No, I'm, because we go over these things over and over and over and over and over again.
But you have a job description, I have a copy.
We don't always agree with that job description, and we change it.
I have a copy of the job description.
We had a job description.
2012, that you voted on last week, or at your December 4th meeting.
And then we didn't have a quorum at the following meeting, so nothing happened on that following meeting.
But you voted on that. But did you change your mind the following week?
Nobody changed your mind, there was no meeting the following week. Nothing happened.
December 4th.
We voted-
You voted on that job description. You eliminated the educational requirement.
And we also, we changed the salary requirements, which is why we sent it to the personnel policy board to rescore it.
You said that there was a, if I'm not mistaken, there's a range, and that was discussed. So there's the range, I don't understand why it can't be posted or advertised.
Do you want to post it?
I think there's still-
Let me just clarify this.
Component.
Jerry-
No, actually, if you go back-
During the meeting, Mike asked me, we did establish a range, I think we voted on a range, but-
Correct.
The range was still established with a bachelor's degree, minimum. Mike turned to me and said, Dad, this has to be rescored, and I agreed with them. And I said, well, you have to send it to the policy and procedures at the next meeting, they're going to rescore it. Now, the only thing that I'm aware of, the only thing that I'm aware of, is the professional education has changed. And that's the only thing we're going to be dealing with, because everything else is the same. Am I right?
Yeah.
So nothing else has changed.
So I mean, still, I mean, you know-
You can't put the range in there until a policy procedures board gives them back the range. They can choose to accept the range or leave it as is, but we have to give them a range. Because the classification of the education has changed.
So the date for advertising this will be when?
We're planning on scoring it, and we'll give it back to the selectmen.
It's got to go to the finance, doesn't it?
No, this is not for rescoring.
Not, not with the rescore.
The position's already established.
So if you go ahead and score-
Rescore it, we give it back to the board here, and then they can post, yes.
So your next meeting is when?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
They're meeting every week.
Next week, next Tuesday.
So you're meeting next-
I can't say we're going to have it to them, I don't know.
This is the form, the finance committee are on that form, that's why I just said what I said.
Yeah, but this is not the rescore.
The job posting, yeah, but they can sign it, yeah, yeah, it's not a big thing. It's not like a PCF.
So my question is then, next week, if you're meeting, and you have a posted meeting, and it's gone through personnel policy, you can vote to go ahead-
We could.
If, if-
If we decide to-
As to the question, are you going to do that?
Well, there's a, there's an if in there, and that's if personnel policy sends it back to us by next week. Yes, we, I would, it will be on the agenda, certainly. Doesn't say it gets voted, it's on the agenda. Moving on. Public safety complex vacancies, there was some gentleman who's expressed an interest. I can't remember.
Mr. Joe Bianca.
Bianca.
Joe Bianca.
Who's that?
I don't even believe he sounded at all.
He had a letter somewhere, didn't he?
I didn't put it in that packet.
I had it somewhere, so, yeah, somewhere, I saw an email from him.
So would you be open if I can schedule the interview for the 15th, for next week?
Yes. So we're still missing one member for that-
One.
Still missing one member for that committee.
Is there a selectman on it, Mike and Dave? It's okay, good. Is there a finance committee member?
No.
We should ask a finance committee member to be on that.
Was somebody.
You have fire chief-
Eric was on it from before.
Did he?
Okay. I don't know whether he's still, he was the finance committee-
Who isn't?
When I, when I was there before.
Okay. So we still got one person.
We still need one.
But they can function.
They can function. Housing authority vacancy, we still have an opening there?
No, nobody's responded.
Nobody's responded on that one. Ah, discussion items, job posting scheduled for town administrator, fire chief. I just didn't get that on the agenda far enough. We've done that. Temporary clerical position in the select board office.
That one's all set.
That one's all set.
Oh, she working on?
Very good.
Roofing invoice, you all saw the comments on that? Yes, no? You saw that? Steve Hyde's letter for vacation has gone to town council, I remember, if I remember correctly, correct? He was looking for-
Vacation.
Vacation.
Comment from the town treasurer, she asked me to tell you that she should, if you're going to do anything in that, she should be allowed to inform unemployment, because that is supposed to be used up before they take it. And he's been paid unemployment every week since. Okay?
Yeah. Well, and the fact of the matter is, he, we did this in open session, right, for vacation? He wanted nine weeks? We sent the letter back to him and asked him to specify where the nine-week number came from, and all he did is send us back our, the personnel policy manual and said, here.
Yeah, but I thought it was based on longevity, not what people thirty years of service have.
Well, we, we asked him to tell us where he came up with nine weeks, and we couldn't, he never did.
No, he didn't.
So we sent that on to town council now, for some advice. Security quotes?
I have not saw the quotes yet.
Okay. Brickyard Road, everybody know what happened there?
Yep.
Question is, what do we want to do?
So, just back up, so there was no quorum, or they didn't show, what happened?
They didn't show.
So what's the status of the-
We don't own it yet. They, they've, I've-
The onus is not on us, is that right?
Well, it is on us, whether we choose to go forward and either seek damages or specific performance, or ignore it. We can do one of three things. We can ignore it and just let it go, we can go and seek specific performance, or we can seek-
Seek what?
Specific performance, make them do it.
Okay.
Well, that's one thing, but on the other hand, too, all that's going to cost money, except for the exception to- Why didn't they, why didn't they not show us? Anyone talk to them?
I did, and I can't remember now, all of a sudden I've drawn a blank.
Was it, you know, a scheduling snap, or was it intentional?
It was deliberate.
It was deliberate?
Yeah, it was deliberate. There was a dis, why was it, Reggie, I forget?
Had to do with the conservation commission meeting.
Oh, they had a buyer who came into conservation commission, and as a result of conversations with conservation commission, reneged on his offer to buy.
Buy a couple of lots, yeah.
Yeah, so they then got, that we interfered, or conservation interfered with their contractual, their seller, and they therefore backed out of the deal. There's two sides to that story, and the question becomes whether we want, actually, town council called me today. Katie-
Katie Klein.
Katie Klein called me today wanting to know what we wanted to do, whether we wanted to move ahead with specific performance, because we did in fact show up to close, and they chose not to. And I've had one conversation with Attorney O'Grady, and at that point in time, he had not decided what action he was going to take.
What's the consequences for not doing?
Anything. And then we don't get the property, and they get to sell it to us however they want.
And they have to pass our liens.
Yeah, we got all our liens still pending.
How much are the liens?
It's under $50,000, but-
But we'll still get 40, 37, 38?
Yeah, we'd get that money, but we were going to buy 22 acres for under $50,000.
That's a back area that's kind of swampy?
Well, it's along the riverbank.
Can't be used for anything.
No, can't be.
But it was open space.
It's open space, and we'd have good access to it.
And for what it's worth, it's probably stay open space for the most part.
Except it'll be private property. It'll be private property that you'll be excluded from. And it, it upsets the, would it, does it uput the railroad? So it would be along-
It uputs the railroad and the-
It would be along the proposed rail trail.
What kind of leverage do we have? I mean, they haven't paid the liens, why would they pay them?
They will, when they have to, when they close.
When they close on the property. They can't close until they pay us.
Oh, okay.
So the question becomes, one, do we do nothing? Two, do we seek specific performance or damages? Or, I guess the suggestion is to call Mr. O'Grady and see what their intentions are at this point in time before we take any action.
I think I would go with that latter.
One second, go ahead.
I think it would go with that latter, I mean, find out what's clarified for us, right.
At 50K, we'd probably do well in the town conference if the community preservation was entered into it. That money couldn't be used to secure the property, and we have another $50,000 in our operating budget.
I make a suggestion that, or a motion that Mike talked to Attorney O'Grady, and then we form our actions after the discussion.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second, special town meeting warrant articles, we don't have anything yet, do we?
No.
Highway superintendent job description, we're talking about that. Building inspector zoning enforcement officer's job description?
That's in your packet under personnel, and that is an updated job description.
Do you want to go ahead and post that?
Reggie, is that description taken to consideration, the problems that were in the past with, with the state inspection bureau, and things that we didn't do correctly? And are they all straightened out?
I believe so.
And they're incorporated into that?
I believe so, because the policy board scored and reviewed that position, that job description after the fact.
Okay. No, I mean, there was things like staff, computers, all this other stuff that was supposed to be part of this violation we had to do.
All right, do we wish to take some action on that?
Post it?
Want to post it?
Do you want to rescore it? I'm sorry.
Rescore?
Well, only because, where do you want to start at? Because Rich has been here how many years? He went from stipend to a salary, then it had to go in front of the personnel, personnel board. It was scored as a full-time, but it's not-
I, I think we ought to sit down and talk about this, how, whether there was a way we did it before with child development, there's another way we did it with the interim person, and then Rich became as a salary before it was all fee-based. I think the, the, and I don't know if that's the way to go, but if you go fee-based, we're not going to get the zoning enforcement.
That's what always happens.
And, and that's what happened in the past, but- But there was a state law, I thought, that changed that it couldn't be fee-based. I, I don't know, I'm just asking. That was a change we made about four or five years ago. That was why we didn't make the change. I just want to make, make it have endangerous and-
So are you suggesting that we discuss it more, or?
Yeah, we discuss it more, I would say.
All right.
On how we want to do it.
All right, but everybody's got the job description in, and does everybody understand the difference between what you used, the pay used to be and what it is now?
Would you go over it one more time?
It used to be fee-based, and you got, I think it was-
The town would get half, I'm not saying, 40%?
No, it was 80/20.
Well, I think at one point it was child development, it was different.
It was much more advantageous for the employee. And you used to split the fees, the employee got to keep 60% or 40% or 50%, depends on what it was, of the inspection fee. But what happened is, because he doesn't get compensated for zoning violations, he kind of fell by the wayside, he didn't go out and enforce things.
Correct.
Then we made him an employee, which was hopefully going to encourage him to go out and enforce the bylaws, as opposed to just doing the things he made money on.
He had set hours, too.
He had set hours.
And did it?
Yes, it helped, it improved it tremendously.
Enforcement, yeah.
I don't know, I, I believe it's pretty close to what we, we expected, but-
And then we, we had the same issue, we had an expense issue. He was, for a long time, got paid a plat per diem, then we put him on an expense account, and then he didn't, that didn't work out, we put him back on the, the-
Did he put his official stuff in? Because I haven't done my official.
No, he's actually, his birthday's coming up, and that's when he's on.
Okay. So, so he planned for it, but he can change his mind.
Yeah, but when is, when, if he, if he were to do it hypothetically, when would he do it by?
April.
Oh, he was going to, I thought he was going to July.
No, no, that's when he's going to give us notice.
Oh, okay.
But is that, and I have no disrespect, I was just trying to make it easier for you guys to discuss, give time to post, give time to-
Right. And the other thing, too, is, I know we have people leaving, do we want to hire somebody so there's going to be overlap?
Yeah, learn the job.
Learn the job, and now why, you know, and I think it's important.
Well, then, do we, is the only issue left, the compensation issue? Are we satisfied with the job description?
Yeah, I think the job description's funny, I just didn't know what, I know there was discussion, we've had individually, I don't think as a board, but individually, whether we should think about fee-based versus salary, it's just a matter of having the discussion, I think, and-
So why do we want to do that, or do we do it tonight and put this thing out?
Do it tonight.
All right. Anybody got a comment? What, he's not, he's, he is now salaried, right?
Right.
Yes. Fee-based before, the town always got a percentage of the dollar that he brought in for inspections. What we, what, what happened before in the past was, we didn't get the level of inspection on the other half of this job, which is zoning enforcement. There's no money in zoning enforcement except for fines. And those fines, I believe, come, 100% comes to the top. What happened was, from that change, we went to salary, and I think it was a strong suggestion from the state building commissioner to go to salary, to be more in line, and we choose that. And, and the salary was based on 30 hours a week, and that's for him to do the inspections, have office hours, and also do zoning enforcement.
I don't see why we would change.
Okay.
It sounds like it's done what it needed to do with getting the zoning.
The question becomes, does he, does he need 30 hours?
A, or, and also the question, if I may ask, is, how much do you want to start that position? How much salary do you want to start that position with?
Well-
Well, there should be a range.
Right, and it should be between the low and, should be the lowest, the bottom of the range should be the lowest for that job.
Well, if he's brand new and he has no experience, it would be the bottom.
Right.
That'd be entry level. But if he comes in with seven or eight years of experience, you can bring that up.
Right, but that's what you put the range in, the range.
Correct.
But hypothetically, 20,000 to 30,000, 20 if you come in with no experience, 30 if you come in with some experience.
You got to show your value.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, we need to look at what the range is, and it was scored.
Yeah, would you, would you like a survey? There should be a survey.
No, we should use this, yeah, but we should use this, if it was scored, then that's what we should use. There's a range there. So that we, we can't go outside of that scoring.
So the building inspector's salary for last year was 48,000.
Yeah, but we need to go back and get the original scoring on that. Who's going to-
Says how much?
Forty-eight.
Says building inspector's salary, 48,219.
That is correct.
Dollars and any of that sense.
Yeah. Thirty hours.
Okay.
So who's got, who's got the scoring?
I think we do, we do.
All right, so-
It just gives a ballpark, so you're saying- There's a range.
All right, so do we, do we want to move, so we're going to, are we, someone want to make a motion about sticking to salary?
I'll make a motion to stick to salary for the building inspector zoning enforcement officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a range that we're going to use tonight, or are we going to-
I don't have the range.
So when do we have to come back to-
We'll have to come back and discuss the range and the posting next week.
Okay, next week, next week.
Can we just, well, if they scored, that would be the range, I would assume. Yeah. Couldn't we just say, once it's scored, then you post it? Yes, you can do that. Why don't we just do that? Because we're just going to beat the horse to here. I mean, just get it out there and get it going.
All right. So we're going to, whatever the scoring comes in is going to be?
Yeah, so I would make a motion to post the position once it is scored by- I'll give Reggie the scoring, she can, you know, I'll give a recommendation to it, and Mike and you guys can ratify it next time.
You want to talk about non-
Mike, all in favor?
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Did we want to, did you have something that I cut you off on? Gary? No, oh, I'm sorry. Do we want to talk about non-union personnel wages now, or are you going to wait?
I'd rather go in, well, I'd like to come out of the executive session and then talk to union, non-union.
We just do it now?
What's that?
I mean, I, I mean, I, I feel like they deserve something, I just thought...
I know, but I just...
We don't have to talk in an executive session, can we just talk in an open session?
Yes, talk in a non-union open session.
Can we just do it now and get it over with?
We, for negotiating purposes, we're going to put it after the union contract negotiations and executive session.
And then we're going to come back out and talk about it, okay?
School lunch fees, does everybody know what's going on there?
No.
All right, do you have the letter from...
It's in your packets.
There's a letter from town council?
Yeah.
Town council, there's a letter from town council. The Norris School currently has a tab of...
Almost $4,000.
$4,000 and maybe more, that is unpaid for school lunch fees. Superintendent has approached us to say, or asked if we would collect that money for the school department. This is money that students do not pay as a result of getting lunch.
Lunches is that?
That's a lot of lunches.
Wait a minute, they do, like, students don't have to pay, but the parents are given a bill?
Well, there's some, we're...
Kind of along the same lines.
Right.
So is this an obligation that they signed to?
The school, the parents?
Is there a signed document that they...
No.
No.
No, but we give them the benefit of the school lunch, and they, they're supposed to pay. It's the dollar down, dollar, dollar a day thing, you know?
I mean, when I went to cafeteria, you paid that day.
Yeah, well, if you don't show up with your money, they still give you a lunch.
Well, then, maybe the second or third day, you should say, go and see your mother.
They won't do that to the kids. They won't do that to the kids.
Hey, why, hey, don't get me wrong, we're too politically incorrect here.
This is scrooge. Um, no, the question becomes, the question that they wanted us to resolve is, is it school department's...
School department's problem, not ours.
Problem, or our problem to collect?
School department. Okay, we're not going to, we're not going to go out and beat up little people.
No, I agree with that, but is, is, is there any of them, you know, over $100, $200?
We only grow.
If we're chasing $10 or $15 fees.
Right.
Type one of these people.
They want us to be the bad guys. I'm sorry. They, they set up a policy, they need to enforce the policy.
I agree with you.
And if they want to collect it, that's up to them. Or if they want to eat the $4,000 in their budget, that's up to them.
Mike, what exactly is the superintendent asking?
He's asking whether or not...
Must pay good the $4,000?
No, no, no.
I said go and break legs.
He wants us to go collect it.
He wants us to go collect it?
Yes.
He wants our treasury.
He wants our bad guys. I'm sorry, not going to help. He wants our treasury to go and collect it.
What's my name?
He wants our treasury to go and collect it. But, you know, if, I'm just trying to put a handle on it. If there's 50 or 60 people, and we start sending, you know, the man noses out to them, how much experience are we paying, a secretarial staff, stamps and postage, to get that money? No, they need to correct the situation.
Send it to the schools, let the schools chase their money.
They set a policy up, they have to have a completion of that policy and how it's supposed to click things. Not us.
Would you want to pass a word along to Mr. Ferguson?
We decline, we decline, respectfully decline, I'm sorry.
He may even be watching this, because he was waiting.
If they want to involve the board, so like, hiring practitioners, or any other part of the administration of the school says, you know, it's all or nothing.
Or we get line item veto power, because otherwise we deliver them a lump of cash that they choose to spend, and if they choose to give away $4,000 in lunches.
That should verify it.
Do you think we could do enough to get $4,000 in lunches?
I just want to make sure, this is not kids that met a threshold.
No, this is just people who didn't pay their...
I get the whole need thing, I believe me.
This is people who are, if it's a dollar a day for lunch, these are kids that go through the line repeatedly who do not pay their dollar a day. And instead of saying, out of line, you don't get lunch, they're given a lunch, and it goes on a cheat sheet.
And Mike, we are talking about elementary school kids.
We are talking about elementary school kids.
So where do they get that dollar? It's really the parents, of course.
Right, it's, it's the parent that owes it.
Well, I, I agree. I'll make a motion, we send this back to the school department to collect their own money.
Uh, is there a second?
Dr. Roy?
Oh, you're on the school committee.
Dr. Roy?
He's probably watching.
Yeah.
There's lots of people that could say second. I'm not saying it. I did not.
Yes, you did.
I did not. I said there's lots of people that could say. Do you understand?
I don't really think...
You said the word.
I could say it.
Okay.
There's somebody else.
All in favor?
Second.
All right.
Wow, that was... That was painful.
I understand.
Uh, pending projects, building use...
Two extensions here.
Huh?
Two extensions.
Oh, two extensions. Building use, exit interviews, budget preparer, we did that, new posting.
Building use, can I go back to that one quick thing?
Yeah.
They, I keep getting asked by the library trustees on how they can serve alcohol at a fundraiser at the library. And I keep going back to them that they can't charge for the wine, they can accept donations for it, because otherwise we'd need...
I thought they got, I thought they got something from legal counsel.
Yeah, because I got an invite to a wine tasting.
Yeah, they did something with legal counsel.
I just wanted, I get asked again. No, no, so something's got to clear up. I got, it came in the mail the other day, I got an invitation to a wine tasting. So somehow they worked it out. Well, that's why they keep asking you.
Maybe they wanted you to bring all your wine.
The town was alcohol and drug free. And if that's on town property, how can they give out alcohol?
Same way they give out alcohol in Palm Park.
A permit? That's a permit through there. That is actually town property, the library?
They should need, they would need a permit.
Yeah, they're asking for a permit for it.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, they're going to get a permit. I told them, we would probably waive the fee.
Well, when are they going to ask? I don't know when that, I just, my wife sent it, showed me the invitation. I don't know when it is.
Hopefully, so they can get that application in.
All right.
Select board objectives to be scheduled contracts, not posting, handbooks, general. Do you want to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'm going executive.
All right.
Fine with me.
We're going to move to...
But you haven't taken the class yet.
That's why I don't know where the cheat sheet is. Executive session, cheat sheet. Um, we're going to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing union contracts for the purposes of negotiation. We will be going back into regular session at the conclusion of that.
To deal with the non-union.
To deal with non-union employees. Starting at the other end.
She was aye.
You took the aye.
You took the aye.
Call the aye.
We will be going back into regular session.
Only five, 10 minutes.
10 or 15, 10, 10 minutes, or less. Did I miss anything else on here?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, we got to move them.
No, I mean, if they can't come back on, I think they should come back on. We won't have to, we will.
Yeah. He doesn't have any courage.
What?
But one of the hardest votes I ever did take here was, was to vote not to give the non-union personnel a raise. And it was very difficult to do at the time, difficult finances at the time. And I'd like to correct that at this moment, if I could. And I would like to propose a motion to give them a 60 cent hourly raise with a 2% yearly raise retroactive back to June 1st this past year.
I think you need, before you do that, you need to think how much it's going to cost. Because you're at, you're doubling, you're giving 60 cents on, 60 cents an hour on top of, and then a 2% raise on top of that, without knowing what that payroll number is.
Are you, you're not thinking of 60 cent step, step raise?
Step raise.
But they don't, I don't know if everybody...
The only reason I'm saying, they have not given them a raise.
They get a step, okay?
They haven't got a raise in three years.
You're right, but the step...
Well, wait, I can think of that. Two years ago, they got zero. Last year, they got 1%. This year, we got zero.
Right.
I think with the amount of free cash we do have this year, with the rough number that we're looking at, we're still only talking probably somewhere, I don't know. I don't know, I'm just picking a number.
But that's my point, you don't know the number.
Yeah, but it's going to be like 7, maybe 10,000.
Reggie can help us with that a little bit.
It's in your packets.
It's in our packets?
Sorry, it's in your packets.
What is it?
The spreadsheet for...
Oh, that's what I want.
Across the board.
Okay.
It also shows...
What page?
It's, um...
Salary, salary.
Towards the end.
Which?
Page 38.
Of what?
Which one?
If you're in Dropbox.
Yeah.
It's on your agenda.
Page 38, so it's almost out to the end.
I saw that.
I can't find it.
38? That's way up there.
Yeah.
Agenda.
38? Boy, you kept us in suspense.
Oh, there is.
If you go all the way to the bottom, actually, page 39 will tell you, um, union, non-union, and union and non-union only.
39, okay.
Okay, see, it's all these sheets.
What, is it 38?
39 is the final.
Okay.
All right, so...
But this only shows the 1%, 2%, 5%. It does not...
Okay, the 2% would be $19,104.
Additional.
Additional. And the 50 cents would probably be another 15, 16,000 dollars.
Yeah, that's, you're dead.
What page are you looking on exactly?
38.
38?
If you go down the bottom, you can see she has a column for 2, 2 and 1/2, and 3.
Because, I mean, the 50s, because they get, if you give them a normal step raise, it's a 55 cent raise, right?
50.
It's 50.
50, 52, something like that.
50 cents. Why would you go to 60 instead of giving a step raise?
Let's just give them a step raise of 50, the regular step raise.
Give them a regular step raise, rather than start giving, going outside of the thing as a precedent.
Yeah, it says it right here, yeah.
David?
Yes?
They, they would normally get a step raise of 50 to 52 cents, depending on longevity. Why would you want to go outside of the established step raises to set a precedent, to give some other number of 60 cents?
I'm just trying to make up for, for past, that's...
Why, would you, wouldn't it be wiser to go with a step raise, to give, to give the normal step raise that they should have gotten?
How much would that be?
50 to 55, something like that.
Depends on the classification. Could be as low as 49 cents, as high as 52 cents.
Does that sound more reasonable?
Well, it doesn't...
Palatable to Michael Val?
No, no, well, it's, first of all, it doesn't sound more palatable, because we don't know the number. But it keeps it within the framework that we've established for, for management purposes. Instead of arbitrarily setting a number that we then have set a precedent to come back and could be...
For what it's worth, Mike, I think everybody should get 50 cents. I mean, because we ran this problem before, where some people got 49, and some we got 50 cents, and for a penny...
What are you going to do the next time? If we, if we, if we let the, if we let the chart run its normal life expect, what are you going to do? You give them all 50 cents this time, what are you going to do the next time?
Okay, that's a question.
Right.
What happens if you get somebody at the top of their chart, and they don't get a step raise?
Well, we've added numbers on that chart before.
I think we're pretty all set with that, but I'm just saying, I would be more comfortable with a set number.
But then what, then why have that chart?
The old, the old chart that you brought in, I thought it was redone.
Yeah, it was redone, done two, three years ago.
But if you're, if you're going to step outside the...
All right, so 50 cents, all right, or just a step?
A step raise.
I just don't see many reasons to step outside the, the established policy.
Plus the 2%.
Then you're talking, what did you say, almost $40,000?
About $35,000.
You're talking 10%?
But you know, in defense of the union, Mike, we're talking about...
Non-union, right?
Non-union, and that, you know, they didn't get a raise one year, they got a token of 1%, and right now, they got nothing. So if you took an average of the last three years, they've only got 1%, you're going to give them 2, so that's still 1% a year, plus one step, you're still around 2% on average.
No, I, I'm not fighting you, I'm just...
Okay, so my motion is 50 cents step, and...
Can we stick within the, not the arbitrary number, stick, stick, stick within the chart?
Stick with, you know what you're talking about? And a 2% raise for non-union personnel.
Second.
Which is going to plus around...
19,000.
19 is the, was the 2% plus whatever, 50 cents.
But I mean, I think Ed has a point, if you average it in the last, we'd feel better about that, Mike, averaging it for three years, it's... We'd feel better about that, Mike, averaging it for three years, it's really pretty...
I don't have a problem with that, I would, cost of living has, I don't know where the cost of living is right now.
No, it's not going to be subsidized, it must be $7 a gallon.
Do you believe the propaganda? We got a motion and a second. All right, did someone second that?
Yes, it was the second by Ann.
So we're going to retroactive this.
Right.
My first, right?
Yep. Is there anyone we're excluding from that list? All non-union? So, just to be clear, you're talking about Reggie?
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about police and fire chiefs?
Yep.
You're talking highways superintendent, which means you can't...
I'm not voting.
You can't vote. You actually shouldn't. Who else would we miss?
Library, council aging.
Eileen.
All the office people, all the office people are easy ones.
Council aging.
I'm thinking that you're giving it to the administrators, to the supervisors.
They're all non-union.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page, that we know that there's no surprises, that...
The same people that got it the last time.
Well, I guess we're just saying all non-union personnel.
Right.
I'm just looking to see if anybody should be excluded so that we don't have any...
All non-union.
All non-union, so we know it's supervisors and workers and everybody else. All right. So we have Ed's going to abstain, which was for, there's a motion and a second, all in favor, any further discussion?
This is retroactive back to June 1st.
July 1st. July 1st. Is that going to change anything else now that I think about it?
Mike's having a discussion with himself.
It's going to change, well, it's going to change your unemployment because it's payroll allotted. It's going to change your workers' comp because it's payroll allotted. So there's going to be other costs involved.
Not much.
No, but it's going to change your retirements, your contributions to...
Not when they already figure the retirements, because December already went by.
Well, I'm just saying, there's other costs. All right, I just want, we've got all the ducks in a row.
Are you okay?
No, but this is majority rules, so all in favor?
Trust me. I abstain.
Yes, yes.
Is this going to be an article for the warrant?
No. It'll be an article to transfer money to those budgets.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So it's four items. To transfer money to each line item.
Where are you going to get the money from?
Free cash.
There's a question on the floor, Mike.
They're taking 10% of the free cash.
When the free cash is declared.
So you don't need to bring it to town meetings?
Yes, you do have to come to town meeting because you can reauthorize money to put back into the budget, so every line item that we, these people are affected...
Right, so you want to say an article?
Yeah, we have to do an article with all that.
That's what I was asking.
What happens if that article fails?
That fails?
It fails.
But some, you know, you have to get up and depend...
Just a hand up.
I just have a quick question. You're talking doing a step raise per hour plus a 2%. What happens with the people that don't have a set hourly wage, I'm strictly salary? So what happens to that 49 cents?
You'll get a raise.
You'll get 2% of your salary.
And you'll get 50 cents on average what your hourly pay is.
Okay, just a question.
Happy New Year.
Well, because I work anywhere from 50 to 70 hours...
We're talking just the base pay of 40 hours.
That's right. I'm on vacation. Thank you.
Any further, oh, is there something else we need to talk?
It's 9 o'clock, I'm missing NCIS.
I didn't miss anything on the agenda, but I was thinking of all those things you sent me. Oh, the school department has asked for everybody's emails and telephone numbers. Does anybody have a problem giving the school department emails?
No, school department what?
Our emails.
None of mine is.
So they can email you things.
Okay. What kind of things?
I don't know, I was just asking.
Superintendent, okay.
That's fine.
Emails.
Okay.
He's going to email that bill.
Reggie, do we get any correspondence from Board of Select and emails? There is an email from Board of Select.
I always forward everything to you.
Okay, so you don't just get them as administrators, you get the emails?
Yes, and they all go to...
Yeah, they shotgun out, they're all... She drove me crazy this week with emails. God, every time I opened it up, there was another email from her, and it wasn't like 10 pages, it wasn't one. Anything else coming before the meeting?
There's nothing else on the agenda?
No, I think I did everything.
Move to adjourn?
Well, I, you know...
Open time for the public. Open time for the public.
Quick. Wasn't quick enough.
Well, because you didn't let me finish before, I wanted to ask you if you can also post the administrative assistant position at some point. Does that have to be posted?
She's on leave from the administrative assistant.
Yeah, there is no vacancy technically in that position.
So how is this going to work? Because there's been, you know, no secretarial help in that office. Are you going to have a position?
We have somebody in there now helping, Jennifer Pellican's helping.
You're saying if we hire a town administrator other than Reggie, what happens?
No, I'm saying whoever is hired, if you have a town administrator, are you going to have an administrative assistant?
Yes.
That position was there before. It needs to be posted, am I correct?
No.
No, currently right now, she's on a leave of absence from it, the way, same way Billy Cleda's on a leave of absence as a mechanic.
Reggie told me that the position had never been posted, am I correct?
The temporary.
Temporary.
The temporary.
When we were hired.
I think when we go to post it, Jerry, I think we should talk down to the new town administrator and draft the administrative assistant position, that position exists and is still... Let me put job description.
It exists and it's still...
It exists.
It's Reggie's old position, if Reggie is not administrator or whatever, then she slides back down into that position. She's on a leave from that position.
Okay, so that position doesn't need to be...
No.
No.
There's somebody sitting in that position.
Same thing for Billy Cleda as a fire chief, he's on leave from the highway department technically, and I haven't filled that position until he has a permanent status. He doesn't have a permanent status.
I thought you told me that that position...
That went back some time, that's correct.
The temporary...
That had never been posted, right?
That is correct, that's when Diana Schindler was here, that is correct.
Your position, wait a minute, your position?
Administrative assistant position when Diana Schindler was here was never posted, that's correct.
Was it?
No, she never did it. You, all the board members asked her to do it, and she did not do that.
Well, how did you get that job?
Through the PCF, through, it went through the channels.
But, so you're in that, you were on leave when we asked you to be administrator, we asked you to step up with the understanding that if you didn't not get...
If I didn't get the town administrator job, I go back to the administrative assistant, that's it.
But it still was never originally posted?
Correct. Diana Schindler did not do what she was asked to do, that is correct.
All right.
I got one other thing, the board, I was the only one who showed up at the casino meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Casino.
It was informational, it's pretty early, there is a checklist here, I'm going to leave here, Reggie can send it out to you, community impact checklist, done by Pioneer Valley Planning on things that could be an issue, maybe not an issue. My recommendation is that she probably forward it to zoning, I mean, to the planning committee and put the 2 cents up and see what comes up as a flag, but there are some concerns here. There's not a lot of money out there, they said it's for consultants to do evaluations for cities and towns that are in immediate area, and they don't even know what's going on.
Before, I mean, we need, this is the thing, I meant, did we all get the Fletcher?
Yeah.
Can I just say something about that?
What?
Fletcher?
Oh, okay.
I mean, that was one of the first big issues I dealt with as a selectman back in '04, '05, is the tire dump. And my concern is that we settled things when it was first done, we settled things again in '05 when people were around staging pictures of tires and stuff down there, it made a bit stink out of it. My big concern with this whole thing with the tire dump is that it sounds like somebody who persistently keeps asking something over and over and over and over again to wear people down. I think certain things were set, there was a court decision, there were things set up regarding that, all legal-like and set aside, and I think some people don't like the decision. And so they keep coming back to us, trying to change that, and we can't. We just have to go by what was ever done at the time of when the land was taken and the tire dump was cleaned up. We can't go back and change history.
Well, can we summarize that? We still hold some money for remediation in case we need it.
Actually, I mean, Geraldine, if I could ask you, that money was left over after the job was completed, that money was set aside...
That was dedicated for any sort of maintenance...
Maintenance or inspection services.
Inspection services because the town was responsible for that.
Was there any cap on how long we were keeping?
No.
All right, so that's that issue.
No, you can't give anything away. I mean, I think the issue was that the family feels that there was bankruptcy and that they're owed money.
They were supposed to be shepherds of that land, and they polluted it. I mean, what right do they have to that? They filled that gully in with tires. I mean, that doesn't show that they could actually take care of the land, I mean, from what I understand. I mean, they created the mess. Am I right?
Well, that, I mean, the money was used as the matching funds in order to get the grant, money was gone immediately from bankruptcy. There is nothing left. That project is done, sealed, finished.
But we have $16,000 for future maintenance.
And that was for...
It's permanent, and that was part of the project.
Now, who was the inspecting authority, ECA?
ECS.
ECS. And they've done, they're supposed to come back and do other inspections at the decision of the Board of Health.
Correct.
Okay. And there is money that, for minor restoration work.
Correct.
And those are the two things they can do.
It's maintenance over the years.
What about Mr. Fletcher's comment that, you know, we were supposed to give that land back if, when it's done?
There's absolutely nothing in any legal document, he didn't own that property at all.
You bought that after the...
No, I know, but whether it goes back to him...
It doesn't go back to him, and it also can't be used, it's not viable for agriculture.
It's a buffer around the tire dump, and access.
All right, so we handled that. Thank you.
PA, confirmations to the panel.
I have a question, though, what about the runoff? Is it doing any damage to the Fletcher farm? Are we responsible for that, or who is?
Are you talking about manure runoff from the cows?
No, the runoff, the letter had talked, Mr. Fletcher had talked...
Right, the pipe, the drainage pipe.
Right.
State Highway. They didn't have to get in touch with State Highway.
Okay, so can we send them a letter saying that, or does he understand that, or...
He's been told that several times.
Okay.
If you look at his letter, he's been in contact with them. But the other thing too is, there's a right of way that was given by the bankruptcy court to the town to have access to that landfill in order to get in there and do work and inspections and observations. You know, and I won't say there's, I haven't been there in two or three years, but there's not runoff and stuff like that, but there probably is. But the onus is, maybe the Board of Health should then send Environment Services out there, which is the inspecting agency, to do another evaluation and report back to them, and CCS. That's only a suggestion, but...
I think it's a good one, I mean, especially...
It should have an oversight, though I'm not sure that anybody's familiar with projects and the Department of Office anymore. I hate to dump it in your lap bed, but, you know, it's the...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there, that was their chore, and it's still their chore, and that's what that money was left for.
Correct.
So, perhaps we should respond to Mr. Fletcher and just send him a note that says that if you're having problems with the runoff, you should contact the State Highway Department?
Well, first of all, we should refer this letter back to the Board of Health, they're the agency in charge.
All right, you want to give, send it?
Am I right or wrong?
Why don't we send Mr. Fletcher a note that we have referred his letter over to the Board of Health, who we believe would be ultimately responsible?
They're responsible for their funds.
So why don't we do that, so that we don't think, he doesn't think we ignored him? We'll send it to the Board of Health for their action.
I would suggest somebody from your board brief them, then, so that somebody knows what's going on.
You know what would be nice, Mike, is to have a bullet, because there are certain things that come up all the time, tire dumps, and just have a bullet of a one pager, the history, the court, the court case number, the decision, dun, 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 dun. And every time someone asks a question about it, pull it out of the file and hand it to someone. Dave, we didn't have that, but for some reason, there's a file missing. But, just do it.
Motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Second.
All right.